Good evening. This is August 26, 2020. Open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board and the Newbury Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order supersedes the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which can be found posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convened by video conference via Zoom as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found in the Planning Board's section of the town's website, in which identifies how the public may join. You can join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering Meeting ID number 83271413056, or by calling 929-205-6099 and entering the meeting ID that was when it's prompted. Please note that tonight's meeting is being held jointly with the Select Board in its continuous of a public hearing regarding the Newbury Golf Center. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Note, okay, we got our stamped plan at 4 o'clock today. Okay, applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state the intention after you have been called. So we have some basic ground rules. Before we turn to the first item on our agenda, please allow me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As a chair, we'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After the speaker concludes their remarks, I will go down the list of members, inviting each member by name to provide any common question or motions. Please hold until your name is called for. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your phone *6 toggle to mute or unmute, or on your computer using the mute button when you are not speaking. You should use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until the chair will yield the floor and state your name before speaking. Board members should be called upon to ease this process. If a board member wishes to engage in a discussion with other members, please do so through the chair. There will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during the public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask their questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Raise Hand function. For video conference participants, this function can be accessed by clicking on the Participants option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. You will hover your cursor over this area. A window will open and will display to the right. On the bottom of the participant area, you will see the phone, video, list, participants, and on the bottom, you will see the ability to click the Raise button. Raise your hand. Please ensure that your name is displayed. You may rename yourself by going to more functions next to your name. List your name, address when you have questions. Helpful participants can use their phone keypad while in a Zoom meeting. Raise hand is *9. I will then allow questions and comments from the public that have hit the Raise Hand button in the order in which they are listed. Our system will keep track of who raises their hand function first. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant, his or her representative, the opportunity to reply. Your hand will then be lowered and you will be given the floor for your question. The board will continue down the list of those in the Raise Hand column and again afford participants or the applicant or representative the opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical or electronic submissions of questions or concerns, they will be read into the record, and again, the participant, applicant, representatives may be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues are raised that have not been addressed. It should be noted that my vice chair will make sure that I am sure to take roll call for each vote. So again, just for folks on the phone, to raise your hand, it's *9, and to mute and unmute yourselves, it is *6 on your phone. Thank you, Martha. And now I'll go to indicate that this is a continued Newbury Golf Center public hearing, a modification of previous approvals, mitigation of disturbance beyond approved limit of work. Planning Board is a modification to a previous approved site plan. For the Select Board, this is a modification to a special permit. Planning Board, site plan review, and the Select Board's special permit public hearings are being held concurrently. Planning Board and Select Boards will open their meetings. So the Planning Board's meeting is open. Alicia?
The Select Board is considering an application submitted by Eric Sorensen, President, Newbury Golf Center, Inc., for modification to the special permit for the Newbury Golf Center, 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road. Assessors map R43, lots 211 and 4B. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to restore areas of work for the project. Note, approval requires a super majority, four out of five votes in the Select Board. Since J.R. Colby has accused himself, approval of this special permit modification request will require all four remaining members to vote in favor. Being the special permit was granted November 15, 2017, Alicia Greco will act as clerk of acting chair for the Select Board's public hearing.
Thank you, Alicia. The Planning Board will open our site plan review at this time. The Planning Board is considering an application for modification to a previously approved site plan submitted by Eric Sorensen, President, Newbury Golf Center, Inc., for Newbury Golf Center, 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road. Assessors map R43, lots 211 and 4B. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved area limit of work for the project. Note, approval requires a simple majority, three out of five votes for the Planning Board. The original site plan approval was granted in November 15, 2017. Okay, so what I'm going to do, I'd like to take a couple of seconds just to kind of recap what's taken place with this project. The reason I'm going to do this, it affords the opportunity for members on the board, on both boards, kind of a historical perspective, because our board membership has changed. And Martha, again, if I speak incorrectly, please don't hesitate to chime in. So this project started in 2017. At that time, the Planning Board was chaired by John Weiss, and we had a different configuration of board. And I think the only board member that was present was George. That was you, if I'm correct. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, and I think for the Select Board, it started, Alicia, I think you were on the board, and I think Jeffrey was on the board. Right, okay. So we started with a project that was approved, and we had to go into a modification after there was disturbance and some wetlands concerns and tree removal. And I think people have a handle on that perspective. And at that time, there was a mitigation plan that was developed after discussion and input, and that was accepted in 2018. And that was basically the roadmap to continue forward. And in a couple of minutes, I'm going to have Martha demonstrate that. Additionally, at the time of the original application, there were, I think, three presentations by Musco Lighting, and there was a lighting plan that was submitted and approved by the boards for the lighting component of this project, which was modified slightly with the removal of 50-foot lighting lights out at the end of the driving range. So Martha, would you mind just popping up on the screen very briefly what was the working roadmap that we, as two boards, approved back in 2018?
The mitigation plan?
Yes, please.
Hold on.
Sure thing. No, no, take your time.
I forgot to do screen share. Can you see that?
It'll be coming in a second. Okay, and is there any way to enlarge that?
Well, let me see here. Yes. How's that?
And that's pretty good. And can you direct the screen upward at all? Is that a possibility? And a little bit more? Okay, and then I'm going to have you use your cursor. So during this process, there were plantings that were required on the west side of the property development. And Martha, you can just kind of roll down along that to mitigate tree removal that was, that needed to be addressed. And there was also some wetland activity that needed to be done. And there was also some additional buffering put at the end of the driving range.
Over here?
Yeah.
Down, down the headlights.
There you go. Perfect. It's too bad we can't make our cursor a different color. I've always thought about that in our meetings. There was also some mitigation that needed to be taken place down along the path of the driveway, also on the west side, and that was completed. On the east side of the property, there was mitigation to be done, and the mitigation included, it's going to be difficult to see on this image. I don't know if you can blow that up at all. Okay, and then we might need to move the screen up a little bit. Okay, so with regards to mitigation on the east side of the property, there was to be a 100-foot-long, six-foot-high cedar fence. And there was also to be mitigation of trees at the end of a parking area, as well as a cluster of trees a little bit further down on the east. And was there some more trees down further on the plan as well? No? Okay, okay, great. So that's what the, did I miss anything in that, Martha? No, I think I covered those points. So those are the things that were to be addressed from a mitigation standpoint. So that's what we agreed upon, and that's what was our working roadmap. As this was going on, there was significant energies with regards to the site development, and a new engineering team was brought in, which worked on a new landscape, if you will, for the site to allow for site stabilization, and that occurred. Martha, can you pop up the Musco-approved lighting plan that we had?
Peter, before you leave that, can Martha show me where the fence? Well, it's okay. It's fine. Don't go back. Don't go back.
We can go back. It's easy. We can show you the fence, because it's important for the discussions, Jeffrey. So Martha, can you go back to that for a sec?
Yes.
You know what? We'll go back to it later. Let's proceed, because it might take too much time.
You sure? Because I can?
Yeah. No, we, you'll start that again, I'm sure.
Okay, so just so people have an understanding and appreciation of what we had agreed upon for mitigation plan. And let's just pop up our lighting plan if we could?
Yes. Hold on. Bear with me for a second.
No, take your time. Take your time. This is technology. Okay, so this was what was presented by Musco. And as I recall, if I recall correctly, there were at least three presentations, and we had photometrics that were discussed. We had this peer reviewed, and we had an appreciation and understanding of what was going to be done with regards to lighting. Now, as indicated, the lighting on the far end of the driving range was taken off the table as this process continued, but the lighting for around the buildings, around the parking area, had all been indicated. And Martha, did we have lighting that was originally being shown down to the short gang?
There was, there was lighting down here, and this plan was done before the driveway was moved.
So this, yeah, this was basically our approved roadmap and what we signed off on with regards to lighting, again, after peer review. Okay, thanks, Martha.
You're welcome.
So we had a modified plan that we had worked on and agreed upon, and we had a lighting plan which we worked on and agreed upon. So more recently, since our last meeting, we were asked to do a site visit by both boards to the center after lighting was established. And so the boards got to see the lighting that was established, and there were concerns raised by the lighting that was there. And so a week later, we had representatives from the Select Board and myself, council, and engineering, and we went and we started to look at how we could address some of the concerns with the abutters with regards to lighting. And we had a discussion for a number of hours out there and looked at the sky and tried to address concerns. And we went back two weeks later, if my memory is correct, which was last Friday, and we spent another hour hours out there with the lighting team or the director of lighting team. Some shielding had been put up, and then we identified areas with regards to a light escape from the property onto the abutters. And the electrician from that team indicated that there were concerns. There were potential shields that were put up to shield the light. And when on the golf center property, it actually did cut down the light moving around that property, but it had kind of the opposite effect from the distance with the abutters, because the light reflected and actually made the situation more aggravated. So from a lighting perspective, the boards had the opportunity to see where we were, and we had an opportunity to also visualize what has gone along with the site. There's been significant improvement with regards to the driving range, with regards to the catch basins, with regards to the collection for stormwater, with regards to the buildings and their completion. So there's been advances, significant advances over the past month with regards to the site becoming much more ready and up to stuff for business. So that's kind of where we are today. And so the boards can appreciate this. There was a deluge of information that was disseminated, received today, and then disseminated to the boards. So we received a lighting plan at 11:04 this morning. We've been asking for a lighting plan for some time. And we received a stamped site plan at about 4:30 today. So neither of these plans have been peer reviewed, which needs to happen. And so it's difficult to move on these two plans that have been proposed without that going on. At the same time, there have been a number of boards, and again, Martha, please correct me if I step out of my, out of my range here. Conservation has been involved immensely with this project, almost on a daily basis, and sometimes twice a day. And Bill Holt has been doing a fantastic job, and I need to recognize him as I did at the Conservation Commission meeting for helping keeping this project in a very forward direction. What Health has been out, and there are some issues, not issues, there are some components that need to continue along that path before all of those are brought to full completion. So.
The building commissioner's also been out and provided some items that still need to be addressed.
So there's been a lot of activity in a very, very short period of time, and a lot of that was disseminated today, because it was just given to our representatives and our different boards and agents. And so I know as board members, it's frustrating to get deluged with a ton of stuff a day or so, or the day of a meeting, and it makes it very, very difficult. So I appreciate your understanding and patience as we work through those things when they occur. What other things do we need to talk about? Alicia, do you want to start with any comments as well?
No, I think, I think you're covering it pretty good.
Okay.
I think the Board of Health also was out there. I think there was a bunch of, I think, I think you're good.
Okay, great. So as we continue our discussion and understanding our parameters for tonight, I'm going to ask our town council, just to help us with our roadmap for where we have been, where we are, and where we need to get to. So Brian, could you just kind of chime in for a couple of minutes?
Certainly, I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. I think I'd start with just offering sort of a comment on sort of this public hearing process, just to frame up kind of one piece of the puzzle that I think is worth noting, and that's that, you know, as you described and as board members have experienced, there's sort of the traditional public hearing process. You get an application, you get plans associated with that. Nothing has happened on site at that time, and those get peer reviewed, and there's back and forth between the board members and the applicant. You get the peer review comments, you get town staff and department comments, and it ultimately leads to a close of the public hearing and some sort of decision that is the outcome of that public hearing process. Now, this particular public hearing process is a little bit of a break from that sort of tradition in the sense that you had a site that had, you know, a site plan approval and a special permit approval, and then certain work occurred on the site that precipitated an application for an amendment to the special permit and an amendment to the site plan approval. And whether or not they're called an amendment, a modification, or a brand-new application, they are, in essence, brand-new applications, and they start a new public hearing process, you know, under the same course and process that you would in any other submission. So what's different about this is that things were occurring on the site while the public hearing process was occurring and unfolding and transpiring. So we had, you know, sort of a divergence from what you would traditionally call the design and then build scenario, where the design and the build part sort of got married to a certain extent, and sometimes reversed in other cases, arguably. So the board has received, you know, an initial, I think you referred to it, as the August 24 mitigation plan roadmap that the board approved. And then along the way, there were sort of incremental plans as work occurred on site and as different issues were tackled along the way. So I'm just going to sort of generically refer to those as progress plans. But up until today, what the board hadn't received was sort of a final iteration of that, a stamped plan that sort of was the culmination of that work, at least from the applicant's perspective. And the reason why that's significant, Mr. Chairman, and just to get back to your original question and frame where you're at today, is normally when you get that final stamped plan, that gets sent for peer review. And although, you know, you may have an engineering component to that, which has occurred in this process, there are other components. There's lighting peer review, et cetera, reviews, and everything associated with that. So that usually takes place once you receive that plan, and we just received that plan now. So that's what we've been working towards, and you received it. So the process is, to a certain extent, been sort of modified, flipped on its head, you know, changed as the circumstances had dictated at the time. So this process isn't something that you would see reflected in the zoning bylaws or Chapter 40A. It's really a creature of necessity here. It's an invention that the board has sort of consented to and that I've played a part in creating to fit the circumstances as we've gone along. But that's not to say, despite the fact that we've created this sort of unique and inventive process to make ends meet as the boards have got along, that any of the traditional components of the public hearing process could or should be disregarded. So you mentioned, you know, peer review, and you mentioned other steps in the process. So those are all, of course, still, and I don't mean to be remiss in not mentioning public participation and public comment. I don't think I mentioned that yet, but certainly an important, you know, piece of the puzzle here. So now, you know, this has been going on for quite some time. I think the modifications were filed, one in May, and then the second one in June of 2018. So all this has been sort of developing. And now you've reached the stage where you have some significant filings now that were submitted today, and the applicant, I suppose, will speak to those and their intentions in just a moment. But the next steps in this process would be to identify and decide what hasn't occurred that needs to occur in terms of review. And then, second, at what point would the boards have received enough comment from the public, from its staff, from its peer reviewers? Because we're working towards closing the public hearing. So at some point, the board needs to decide what information is either lacking or it's received, and at what point in the timeline is it appropriate to then close the public hearing and start to deliberate on the ultimate outcome of this case? So I think that's where we're at in the public process now, and you now have a great deal of information to talk about ahead of you. So I'll stop now.
Thank you, and I appreciate kind of the guidance to help us through this process. With that being said, I'd welcome, at this point in time, the applicant to bring us up to speed as to where the project is and where we stand today. So Eric or team, I'll turn it over to you, please. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Attorney Rosen on behalf of Newbury Golf, and I appreciate kind of laying the groundwork. I think that you portrayed fairly accurately the site, the progress over the last few years, and as Attorney Winter just pointed out, kind of the non-traditional place that we're at. I think I'd like to build on that just a little bit in that normally, when you have your final stamped plans and you're sending them out for peer review, it is because nothing has been built yet. And so in doing that, you are looking to the town's professionals, whether they're in-house or third party, and you're asking them to tell you, if it were built in accordance with his plans, what would the outcome be? This is non-traditional, as Attorney Winter pointed out, in that the project's being built because there was an approved plan, but at the same time, there's a modification in front of the board because of an incident that occurred that I'm fairly certain in just about every single hearing we've been at in the last two years, we've owned and accepted responsibility for it. So while there have not been final stamped plans sent out for review, there have been progress plans, as Attorney Winter alluded to, presented along the way. But more importantly than that, there have been professionals in the field. You have Mr. Swatka, you have the Conservation Commission, you have the new conservation. It has been reviewed, and it has been an ongoing, non-traditional process. We get that. We fully understand it. We appreciate the efforts that everybody has put in to keep this thing moving along. And, you know, where we were going to go and where we were hoping to go this evening was we were going to ask you to consider the plans that are in front of you, which I would, I would point out, they were submitted on July 2. They were not stamped, because we were waiting for some final modifications that quite literally took place in the last two weeks, which was the addition of the final berm. But if you compare the July 2 plans that were presented to this board or to these boards, my apologies, to the plans that were signed today, it was only because that berm was being constructed, measured in the field, added to the plans, and signed and stamped. So where we were contemplating going today, and, you know, knock on wood, hopefully, we can still go there, is as you look at the lists that Martha sent from the building inspector, from the Board of Health, from ConsCom, those are all items that traditionally those departments sign off on at the end. They are small things, most of them. There are some that are more significant than others. But we were going to walk you through and explain to you what is taking place between now and Friday. And then our goal was And then our goal was to make a suggestion to you. And that suggestion was that we do believe that the most significant issue, and I, I actually did reach out to Attorney Winter over the last few days, and more formally, late in the day today, to let him know that we were going to request that the Board close the hearing tonight, but that we were going to ask them to approve the project without the lighting component. We were going to suggest that we go and find an independent third-party peer review, that we not use our peer review or the towns' prior peer review, and we bring in a fresh set of eyes, and that we agree that we will not put on the parking lot lights, that we will reduce the hours of operation by an hour every day so that we don't need the parking lot lights, and that we would pull together more specifications, more information, and work with an expert that maybe Attorney Winter and I could identify, that would be completely independent of any prior expert on this particular site, and that we would agree to defer the lighting and the lighting components until such time as that expert, as paid for by Eric, is engaged, can review, advise, make recommendations, and until a final plan, which includes an expert's recommendations, can be presented to a joint meeting of both Boards for sign-off for the Boards. We, we, we want to ask this because I think for all of you that have been to the site, I, I think that the site is ready. It does have some, some items left. But again, I, we think those are traditional building inspector-type issues, like the top coat of the parking lot has to put down, and it has to be striped. Building Inspector has written an email saying, "Once that top coat's down, I'll give a temporary CO." The Board of Health has been out there. They have looked at a number of issues. And by the end of the day today, the only remaining issue with the Board of Health was a COVID plan, and the Board of Health acknowledged and agreed that they would also give approvals as long as they had a COVID plan tomorrow, paving a schedule to take place on Friday. All of the issues that the Building Inspector identified relate to paving, striping, finishing the coat of the hand, on the ramp for the handicap, the handicap. There are certainly little things, we agree. There's gravel and loam still there. The final work on that is being done tomorrow in advance of the paving, so that everything can be swept and paved on Friday. So at the end of the day, I can have, you know, if this Board is, or these Boards are so inclined, Mr. Laham, Mr. Sorensen, go through all of the materials that we received late today. There's a list from Joe Sawatka of, I believe, 10 items. There is an update from the Board of Health, from Ginger, from Virginia Bacon. There's a list from the Building Inspector where he basically says, "Just to update, I would be okay with signage in place without striping for a temp CO." But they're hesitant on the top coat paving. They want to see that done because there were raised structures that could create safety issues. So he wants to know the top coat is done. And then you'll see there's a list from Conservation Commission, and all of the items have the Conservation Commission's item issue. And then underneath it, you know, in bold lettering, I mean bold, yeah, lettering, indicating the level of satisfaction that they have with each of those items. There are one or two items still outstanding, but even the Conservation Commission is indicating that they would give permission and that they recognize that a final certificate of completion would come at a later date. So we feel like if we could review anything that this Board feels needs to be completed prior to a temporary CO, we, we, again, we, we are continuing to own and take full responsibility for the lighting, where we're willing to, to engage an independent third-party lighting expert to come and look at all of this. But we feel as though the course itself, the range itself, is ready to go. And I, I think it will also afford both Boards the ability to see how the site functions. So again, I recognize all of the comments, you know, as Attorney Winter said, this is non-traditional. It happened approval, construction, reapproval. It's, it's not your traditional scenario, which is why the plans have been progress plans and a bit of a moving target. But I, I do, I would point out that the Town has had representatives out there on a absolutely regular basis, including its peer review consultant, who's doing their work in the field as opposed to by written submission. So with that, I, I think I would like to hand it back to the Boards and ask you if you would like Mike and Eric to walk through each of the items that, that we understand from the Town are still open issues, and that we could discuss whether, you know, what the status of each of those items is, when the intention is to complete those items, and whether those are items that the Boards are comfortable with a Building Inspector looking at it and saying, "Yes, check, that one's done." Health Department Inspector looking at it saying, "Check, yes, that's done," or the Conservation Commission with regard to conservation items. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Rosen. Just so I can identify and reframe, so you're asking, directly, indirectly, that a temporary, that this be approved, that a temporary occupancy permit be the avenue that would be explored and that lights would not be going on?
Correct. So let me, I, I do want to clarify. I would ask that they be allowed to put the lights on, on the buildings, at the end of the day, for safety for employees, to get everybody off the site. But I feel like we could mitigate that by shutting an hour earlier than the schedule that was previously approved. So it would really be making sure the doors are locked, you know, people safely get out of the buildings, you know, that there's, you know, nobody trips and falls walking out to their car. But yes, we are, we are asking for a conditional approval, and a conditional approval that would take the lighting out of the approval and reserve to the Board the continuing right to approve a final, updated, detailed lighting plan with specifications, including, and I'm going to give you an example. Mr. Sawatka questioned why there aren't lights on the driveway. Well, one of the things that, because of the issues with lighting, Eric started looking at alternatives to driveway lighting. And I think I might have even mentioned this at our last site visit, that preferences, that we could eliminate four 20-foot-tall lights on the drive and replace them with an application that incorporates reflectors, which is very common, you know, especially on state roads, highways, and in other areas where you don't want to have lighting. You can use reflectors as an alternate means. So that's something that he's looking into and would like this Board to approve in lieu of four lights, because we believe that will cut down on kind of the lighting in the lower half of the project that's probably around the same level as the house is on both sides of the driveway. So we, we would recognize no lighting, you know, buildings on at, at, you know, at dusk, but shutting them off an hour earlier than the existing schedule had permitted. And I think at one of our prior hearings, you know, that was tied directly to sunset. It was intended to give Eric between an hour and an hour and 45 minutes after sunset. So by cutting back an hour, essentially, he can operate till the sun goes down, he shuts down, and then he just gets his employees off-site safely.
Thank you for clarification, and I'm, I'm not sure if I remember all the hours of operation. That would be something that would have to, I think, Martha, that we'd have to probably take a peek at to see how it makes sense. Because I, quite honestly, Attorney Rosen, I, I know that you weren't on the site the Friday night. One of the biggest offenders for lighting was actually the buildings. They cast some of the biggest penetration to the, to the homes. So I'd want to make sure that i- if we kind of go down this path, that we try to minimize the amount of time that those lights would be on those buildings, because they, they do create concerns.
I, I believe, Mr. Chair, that the way the original decision was drafted was the, the hours of operation, shut the facility at a particular time, and shut the lights no, no later than 30 minutes after. So we would tie it to that. Again, the same thing, the facility an hour earlier, and the lights no later than 30 minutes after that, which would be tied to that hour earlier. And again, we would not turn on any of the parking lot lights at all.
Um, do you have anyone else that wants to supply any additional information, Attorney Rosen?
In, in all honesty, I, I think the most important thing is the lighting. And if, if the Board would like to open up a discussion on that and let us know, I, I do believe we could sit here again and go through all of the, the, the smaller items on the list. Everything's getting done between now and Friday.
All right. Okay. Thank you. I'd like to turn to in-house, Martha. Do you have anything to supplement our, our input of information?
No, not at this moment.
Okay.
The, the lighting, the hours of lighting are outlined, I think, in the, the special permit decision. So I don't have that. My recollection, but I could be wrong, was that the lights would be turned off 15 minutes after the facility was shut down, but we'd have to check on that.
That's a good dust off those.
Could I, one other thing real quick. We, we would shut off the lights, obviously, in the barn, in the driving range. When we shut the driving range, it would just be the lights around the buildings so that the people could see it. So I did want to clarify that one point.
Thank you. Um, all right. Thank, thank you, Martha. And I, I know that there's been a lot of information and a lot of, um, Boards sending information with checklists and with things that are still a concern. So I know that that's still very much an open discussion, as you indicated, Attorney Rosen.
Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask my Board members if they have any questions at this time. And then Alicia, I'd like to turn it over to, to your Board, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just going to kind of go down the list. Larry, do you have any questions or concerns as to what's been presented or discussed thus far?
Yeah, well, a couple of things I'd like to get clarified in my own mind. I assume that the 2018 mitigation plan was done in part because of the trees that were wrongly removed along the Carbone property line. Is that correct?
It was based upon two things. It was based upon the trees that were removed from the site in general, and in particular, the trees removed along the Carbone line. So when the Chairman had the first plan up and he started, and again, I'm, I'm going to try and get my bearings correct, I believe he started on the west, and he showed the mitigation on the west. The truth of the matter is, the majority of the trees that were removed were removed in that area. And more than 100 trees removed in that area. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna just rough-cut the numbers, but I think between 120 and 130 trees removed along that west boundary. And, and that was the greater portion, significantly greater portion, of both the removal and the mitigation program. And I, I believe, Mr. Chairman, and again, I don't, I'm not going to speak for you, but, but I believe if you were saying, as you were saying it, and you were moving the cursor and pointing to it, you were indicating that those had been replaced.
So is it, is your contention that you fully complied with the mitigation requirements of the 2018 plan?
We, we believe that we have either fully complied with them, as shown on the plan, or with alternate measures, and the majority of the alternate measures deal with the Carbone property line, which to us is the, the lighting issue, which is why we're specifically asking to take the lighting issue and, and take it off the table until we can get an independent expert in that can opine for these Boards as to whether or not what is in the field either accomplishes everything in the mitigation plan or exceeds what is shown on the mitigation plan.
Well, there, there was also, I understood from the Chairman's presentation, the requirement of a fence along the Carbone property line. I don't believe that's been erected, has it?
Uh, no, I believe that the, the fence, again, was intended to block light, and I believe that, that the berm is intended to serve that purpose to a better extent and degree.
All right. Well, the, the bottom line, I mean, I, I, no. Um, moving on to, to the lighting, as the lighting plan from 2018, now, why did you abandon that? I understand the 50-foot poles were voluntarily removed, but as far as the rest of it goes?
So we, we removed lights that we felt we could without negatively impacting site safety so as to reduce the visual impact on the adjoining property owners. So for instance, the lights on the driveway, to the extent that they're roughly in the same area that the shed is and where the trees were removed at the, near the shed, if they're at that same height, the top of those poles at that same level, that's an area where that, you know, you could look over the shed and see those lights. So the theory is if we could come up with an alternate measure there, i.e. ground-based reflector-based system, that would be a means of mitigating any risk of, of light intrusion there.
Okay. Could I add something to that comment?
Yeah, grab Mike.
Mike Laham with the Moore and Cameron Group. Regarding those photometric plans that were shown, all of those were sports lighting for the landing area, the grass tees, and the short game area. So all of the photometrics I saw, unless I missed something, all of the photometrics I saw were not related to the, the buildings or the parking lot per se. They were more the, the range lights. So I suppose, I'm wondering, you're saying there's a lighting plan that was prepared. I, I don't see it. All I see is Meridian site plan showing red dots. And I didn't see the photometrics when you were scanning through, though. I didn't see photometrics around the driveway or the parking lot. I do have a Meridian plan, and I can share my screen if that was requested. But they just simply showed, "Here's where the lights are." I didn't know, didn't really call out what they were or the intensities, and there were no photometrics. So I suppose I wanted to make that point, that the lighting plans that were shown are, were not doing any of those lights. We took that off the table six months ago. So.
What do you mean you took it off the table?
We're, we're not doing any of the Musco lights. That was agreed, that was agreed upon. None of the range lights will be installed. None of the short game area lights will be installed. That's, that's what those plans were showing, that, that, that were shown at the beginning of this meeting. We're not doing them. So I just wanted to add that. I thought that was important.
Well, Martha, if you can help me, the 2018 mitigation plan was subject to peer review, was it not?
I, yes. I mean, that was, that was a whole new submission, basically, mitigate the trees that were removed, which was, as Attorney Rosen said, it was about 133 trees.
Right.
Mostly, mostly along, along the north, and then along the new driveway location and along the east boundary with the Carboneys. Excuse me.
Okay. And so we acknowledge that, that it's not been built quite according to that 2018 mitigation plan, correct?
Correct.
And has that been subject to peer review, these various changes?
You know, in the sense that they haven't, they've been submitted as formal, I mean, as, as, as progress plans. To the best of my recollection, and I could be wrong, I don't remember, I don't remember any plan submitted to us specifically requesting the berm that's been constructed instead of the fence, and some of the other site modifications. And I, I'd like to just say also, as, with respect to the, the Musco lighting, I do remember that we were told that the 50-foot poles were off the table. My understanding was that Musco was providing all of the site lighting, including, including bollards and lighting along the driveway. I don't think it was ever made clear that, that the Musco fixtures, which were I don't think it was ever made clear that, that the Musco fixtures, which were, you know, sort of cut-off fixtures were, were actually, that the Musco package was gone completely. But again, that could be, I could have missed that.
All right. Thank you. That, that's all I have for right now, Pete.
Good, Larry. Uh, George, do you have any questions or concerns or comments, please?
Uh, none at this point.
Thank you very much, George. Um, uh, Leslie, do you have any questions or concerns or comments at this time?
Um, just for clarification, the berm is, uh, will have trees planted on it so that will take the place of fencing? Is that the way I understand it?
The, the berm is a six-foot-high berm. It's at a higher elevation than the fencing was. And the berm has already been planted with, and I forget the exact number, it's somewhere between fifteen, eight-foot-high trees. So in total, it's, 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 um, fourteen feet high already with trees that will grow in, and it's at an elevation that's higher than the lot line.
So I'm just going to interject, Les, Leslie, uh, and, and, excuse me for doing so. There are two berms now in, in discussion. So I guess we should identify the different berms. So the berm that was built closest to the east side of the property, of the Carbonis property, we can call that berm A. And then this berm that was just created, uh, since Friday is berm B. And I'm not exactly sure which berm Attorney Rosen is talking about, A or B?
A.
A, okay. Leslie, just.
That, that will, that will be, um, instead of a fence, the berm and the trees to grow in as like a, a natural barrier between the two properties.
You recall the site, and I, and I, I apologize, I don't recall if you were at one of the sidewalks. The property, there's a, a stone wall there, and then there's kind of like some heavy, uh, underbrush. And there's kind of like a drop, and then it kind of starts to slope and rise.
Yeah.
The, the fence on the lot line, if it were built down by the rock wall, would really not provide any lighting protection because it's significantly lower than the facility.
No, I think what I'm referring to is more of the, uh, berm that is, uh, closer to the buildings. Um, those are the ones that have, um, evergreens planted at this point in time?
No, the, the, the fence was supposed to be along the lot line. The berm with the evergreens is the lot line. The berm B along the parking lot up higher near the buildings, forty-two inches high, and then that is planted with fescue, which is a, a tall grass that will grow another several feet over and above the forty-two-inch berm.
Excuse me, would it be helpful maybe if Mike pulled that plan up, if he's got the ability to do so? I can make him a co-host if you want to share.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, I can do that. Um, oh. Okay, it looks like I can do that. Let me see here. Can everyone see the screen okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, the berms in question, um, uh, this is actually, this, this plan here is the plan submitted on July second. So we're looking at almost two months ago. So while it's not stamped, you'll see this was submitted almost two months ago. When I flip to the new plan, you'll notice that it's substantially identical. So I, I would contend that we've, we've had this plan in front of the town for about two months. Um, and, you know, it's been, it's been reviewed by various departments during that time. Um, but, but on that, that plan is berm A, as we're calling it. Let me get my highlighter out. Hold on a second here. Berm A, on that plan, we had already been thinking about, which is right in here. Whoops. Let me get my thing back. Let me try that again. Berm A, right here. Okay, so that's, that's, that's the berm that Attorney Rosen was just talking about, being approximately six feet tall with evergreens planted on it. The evergreens are here and here. And there's dense, um, trees and vegetation kind of in between here. And it's just, these are the sightlines where we, where the, the, the trees are planted. But the berm itself, you can see by the topography here, you know, it rises up, rises up here. So that's berm A. Um, and then I'm going to flip. Now you'll, you'll notice, I'm going to flip to the plan that was submitted today. Um, you can see it, you know, obviously the, it looks similar. And then as I zoom in here, you'll see the berm, the berm looks similar. Uh, I updated a little bit with some of the ad-built conditions as far as the, the topography. But essentially, this is again, berm A. Berm B was added, I believe it was, uh, it was discussed, I believe it was last, it might have been starting a discussion a couple of weeks ago, kind of last week, we were working with, um, the town on, and with, I believe they were running it also by Dia Butter, and it was, and that discussion item for the past couple of weeks. And finally, I think it was the end of last week, maybe we got the go-ahead to start building the berm. Um, it was at some point last week. So this, I'm gonna, I'll circle it. You can kind of see it, but.
And that's the one that would, um, deflect the headlights from cars in the parking lot.
Exactly. That was, that, that, that was an item that was been, it's been discussed, like I said, even more than two weeks probably, where we said, well, you know, we could do, we could do vegetation there, uh, we could do a fence there. And then we said, you know what, a berm is the, is the better alternative because, um, the soils are not great for vegetation. Um, you know, fence can get tricky with the slope, with snow removal. Uh, fence can be really tricky. It can blow over, you know, it's kind of a top of the, top of the hill here. Um, and we, and then we, we settled on this concept of a berm. And I, and I think it was a very, uh, it was a, it was a, it was a, it was a good idea because it's approximately four feet tall, though you, you, no cars have their headlights anywhere near four feet tall. So you kind of, and, and then we originally thought about bringing it right to this light pole. There's one right in the middle. This is where the light poles actually are, um, installed as well right now, the ad-built light pole location. So we were thinking, well, if we bring it to here, that was what we first talked about. I believe people stood over here and at the Carboni property and, and looked across and said, well, if we went between these two light poles or from the end of this parking lot to this light pole, that'd be about a hundred and forty feet. That should cover it. And then I think what happened is we started dumping material there to build it. And then it was discussed that it may be beneficial to extend it. So we extended it another seventy feet beyond this, beyond this light pole there. Um, so that, that's essentially, those are the, the two berms, and here's, here's where the evergreens were planted. Um, so it's, the locations were slightly different than that mitigation plan. But the intent, again, is screening, and we've accomplished that by alternative methods, um, which have been discussed for the past several months. And of course, have been shown on this plan that was submitted, um, almost two months ago.
Well, Mike, if you can go back to that plan just for a second, because this will be helpful in our discussion. And if you can kind of, uh, kind of enlarge where we had the infiltration, um, basin?
Right here?
Yep. If you can just enlarge that kind of area. So, uh, I think board members remember when we were, uh, out for a sidewalk, uh, a, um, maybe a six-foot-high, uh, tarp was constructed, uh, at the tip of the infiltration basin on the, let's see, that would be the northeast kind of end of that. Is that correct, Mike? So if you could run your, your little.
Let me draw what you're talking about.
Yeah, perfect.
Um, it was kind of like in here.
Right. And so that's what the board got to see when we were on, on our site visit. Um, uh, and, uh, that's where the original concept, it, and it was to supplement the, uh, uh, grasses that are closest to the, is that grasses? Grass berm, uh, to kind of, uh, carry that concept a little bit further, uh, over. So that's how the, the whole concept of the berm kind of originated from the, after that sidewalk visit. And I, and I think, uh, um, Attorney Rosen, uh, was advised and, and is aware that the berm was constructed, uh, wasn't approved, it wasn't, it wasn't a recommendation, it was just something that, uh, you, you did in a good faith effort and attempt to try to mitigate the, uh, this situation and to, uh, uh, improve, uh, potential light penetration, uh, from the parking area as cars would pull in and pull out. So thank you very much for that, Mike. That's helpful.
Yeah, and, and to confirm, we totally understand. We did it at our risk, essentially a field change. Let the town know, and the hope was that by building it and showing, uh, the boards what we did and what impact it has or will have when the fescue was granted, that it would be a productive mitigation measure. Uh, and, and by the same token, one of the reasons I do think that it would be helpful to put off the lighting element of this now and bring in an expert is that will also give the fescue some time to grow. It will provide you opportunity to have the site kind of fill in a little bit more and then really get somebody out there to analyze, uh, in the field, whether this works or does not. But again, hundred percent at Eric's risk.
Right. I, I understand. Thank you, Attorney Rosen. And Mike, thanks for sharing your screen. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, uh, Leslie, does that address your questions?
It does. Thank you.
Beautiful. Uh, Woody, while this, this image is up, um, I'd rather, much rather look at your face, quite honestly. Uh, do you have any, uh, questions or comments or concerns, or can we drop down the screen?
I guess I need a little clarification on the hundred-feet fence on the property line. On what plan and where would that be located? I guess Jeffrey was kind of asking the same thing.
So, so my understanding, and, and Martha, if you want to put up that other, uh, picture, I don't know if it showed the exact location of the fence, but I believe if, well, this picture is here. Was it, was it up here or, or?
It was right about there.
Was it there or was it further down? Okay.
It was, uh, it was pretty much where Mike has shown us, a hundred and, hundred linear feet of six-foot-high cedar fence going along the east side of that parking lot and the, the north, the north side. Excuse me, sorry.
Right. So the tree, the trees were strategically located, you know, your, whoops, that kind of curves. Hold on a second. The, the trees were located that your, you know, we're, we're, essentially what we did is we observed in the field where the gaps were. And this is where the trees were strategically located. And you have this berm here as well. You could see the topography climbing up two, four, six feet right here. So you have a berm plus the trees. It was a, uh, alternative method that was, uh, that was selected. And, uh, quite frankly, I think it's a better method than a, than a fence.
Uh, thanks, Mike. Could you drop down your screen for, for just a couple of seconds? Thanks.
Yeah, I'm gonna stop, Aaron. Yep.
Because I just want to get over to Woody. Okay. So Woody, where are you? Uh, there you are. So Woody, um, uh, I didn't want to interrupt your questioning.
No, that, that's fine. Oh, you, um, I, I guess I was, I needed clarification on the fence because I thought that was the boundary fence on the property line, up high where the stone wall is. But apparently there was no proposed fence there, or was there?
Not on, not on that mitigation plan.
Excuse me, um, Pete, can I interrupt for a second? Martha, could you put the original mitigation plan, um, that you put up, before so that what you can, I think that's what Woody's trying to say.
Sure. Again, bear with me for a second. Of course, now I'm not finding it. Sorry.
By the way, while we're waiting, I agree with what Woody is trying to allude to. Um, you know, because it was kind of my understanding too, that it was along the sightline. I mean, I think the berms would work good, especially with plantings. If you can kind of shade most of the light, there seems to be a space there. And I don't, and I always thought there was a fence that was going to go between the space of the ice cream stand and the Carbonis house. I think that's what Woody is kind of alluding to, too. And if it wasn't in the plan, it wasn't in the plan.
Yeah, that's, I guess I'm trying to determine if it was in the plan.
Can you all see this?
Give us a second. We'll see if technology catches up. Not yet, Martha.
So you're not seeing it? Okay. Hold on a second. I do apologize.
You might, um, would, could you have to un, uh, take Mike away as a co-host?
Uh, yeah, let me check.
Because that might, that might interfere with your ability to do things.
Martha, if you go to the, the share screen button and turn it back to a single share for multiple, that might do it also.
You see it now?
There you go. It's coming up.
There it is.
So this is, this is the area.
And if you can maybe enhance that, if that's possible, and I know it's difficult.
Is that enough?
Yes, that's great. Woody, does that, um?
Yes.
So the proposed fence was actually not along the property line. The proposed fence was at the end of the parking lot where berm A is constructed. So, um, it's actually not along the property line, but it's on the end of the parking lot. Do I understand that correctly, Martha?
Yes.
Okay. Woody, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
And it answers mine, too.
Perfect, perfect. Uh, Woody, do you have any other questions, sir?
None at this time. Um, I, the, other than, actually, I, I have one more quick question because it was mentioned. Snow removal, is the berm on the other parking lot by berm B, is the berm B gonna impede on snow removal at all?
No.
Yeah. To put the snow down or?
Yeah. Snow will, you won't be able to plow snow off of that edge. Um, and quite frankly, that, uh, they don't necessarily want you to push it into that stormwater area anyway. So I guess that would actually prevent that from happening. Um, so he would need to find a place for the snow. That's, yep. There's, there's plenty of places for it on this site.
Okay. Uh, no more questions at this time, Peter. I'm good. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Woody. Alicia, I'm going to turn over to the select board. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Pete. Um, so before I asked my board for, um, their input, I just want to read some, um, some notes that I took from the meeting minutes. The Board of Selectmen recently had an opportunity to approve these meeting, meeting minutes. So it kind of set the stage from where we were, back from when this project was really approved to the mitigation, um, and then forward to where we are today. So back on August eighth of two thousand and seventeen, this was three years ago. Um, the lighting was discussed with, uh, I believe his name was Richard Waite, who was then engineer for this, for this project. And he showed pictures of Leo J. Martin Gulf facility. And, uh, he indicated that they would be proposing lighting similar to what was shown in the picture. He noted that there was no light trespasses past the T-boxes. Um, and that is noted in page seven of the minutes of the August eighth minutes. Um, Richard Waite then said that there was a concern about lighting in cars. Vehicles coming out of the parking lot will be shining light onto the adjacent property. Um, they are proposing six-foot-high cedar fence, a hundred and twenty-foot long with ten-foot spruce trees behind the fence to screen the lighting for, from cars. So this is in addition to the escrow account, not in a sub, a substitution. Richie Waite said that the exact lights presented to the board by Musco were the exact lights that would be at this site. That was noted in page eleven. Mockups of the lighting were asked to be shown to the board back in two thousand and seventeen. We asked for that, never got to see anything. Height differentials were indicated as a potential issue for landscape screening back then. Um, then Mus, Musco lighting presented and indicated that the site would not be clear-cutting the whole property. So there would be no direct line of sight to a fixture, therefore no glare. That was noted in page six of the minutes on September sixth, two thousand and seventeen. They indicated that the measured candela at the corner of the Carboni house would be sixty-four candela, which is the intensity of a night, of a nightlight. Um, I specifically asked if light trespass was a possibility because of the height and angle. a possibility because of the height and angle of the lights. And Musco indicated that the neighbors will not be looking at the source of light even with the elevations. Parking lot lights were mentioned, and Musco said that they would be angled down. So, we started talking about these lights, and then there's these minutes go on. But I think what I'm concerned with, and I think this definitely can be mitigated, but I think that, at least when I approved this project, we were told, or I believe, that the lighting would be a certain way, and that's not what's there now. So, the light is not, the headlights are still getting to the other properties. But on that note, I think I'm just gonna, I'm going to pause here, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to go through the board and ask for comments. Jeff Walker, did you want to go first?
Hey, excuse me, just really quickly, as a Newburyport resident, can I, Newbury resident, can I just chime in?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Amy, we're kind of in a, in a little process here where the board's going to be asking questions and asking the applicant, and then we're going to open it up for public comment. So, there will be-
Okay, so I have to hold. I get it. Thank you.
Thanks so much, because we haven't had all the information and all the questions yet. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Yes. I guess the process for me is starting to, you know, become clearer. I always kind of wanted to see a punch list, and the punch list be prioritized so that I could kind of check off in my mind when some of these potential COs would occur for Eric. But what I'm starting to see, and I could be comfortable with, is if, you know, the Board of Health and Concom Agent and Building Inspector, they're probably now taking over that imaginary punch list I would have. So, they're going to be checking things off. So, certainly, if we're thinking of potential half openings, day openings, or anything like that, the full openings for Eric are going to really go back to this lighting issue, which has been kind of a problem for me for, you know, two or three weeks, as it has been for everyone else. So, I think the creative use of berms, fescues, you know, I am around golf courses, and fescues on top of that berm could be very effective. I don't know if there's more need for more berms to shed lighting. And I guess where, when we get into that full opening, what's going to hinder the ability to obtain, you know, real closure on the lighting issue is going to be maybe a gradient of what are we getting? 60% light mitigation, 70% light mitigation, 80% light mitigation? And what's going to be hard is obviously the Carbone's house is lower than Eric's facility. So, that being said, it seems like we're starting to be able to proceed in the right direction. And the full opening obviously is going to really depend on what's Eric able to do with the lighting.
Thank you, Jeff. Mike?
I was up today, and I saw the new 300 foot berm. I was very impressed with what it was doing. And I think this is going to solve a lot of the problems. And it's going to take some time for things to grow too. It's like I said, it's not going to disappear overnight, but I think it's a much better option than a fence right now.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thanks. Gary?
Sure. Well, I, I think the applicant is, is trying to be very, very reasonable in by not, you know, deferring the lighting. I think that may go a long way in solving the butter's light issues. And I think they're trying to be really reasonable in an effort to get up and running. They've lost most of the summer. I would, I'd really like to see them to be able to have a thriving business. And I guess my question is, like paving is happening Friday, so what happens after Friday? Do we have to meet again on, on this or what?
I don't, I don't know if we're there yet. I don't know if we can answer that question. I think we'll, we'll have to answer that by the end of this here, end of this meeting. We'll have an answer to that.
Okay.
So, I, I, I still have a concern about the mitigation plan. The, when the, this, this clear cutting of the buffer zone around, especially along the, the Carbone property line, there was supposed to be significant plantings put there. And I know the berm was put instead, but you still need to put something up on the berm to grow higher, to kind of like, be like a wall. I don't know if anybody can see, I have the plan right here. I'm looking at that spot right there. I'd like to see plantings there. The lighting from the, the lighting from the-
Couldn't see that? Is there a way for you to put your pen on it?
Yeah. It's the original mitigation plan where the bushes was supposed to go between the shed, and then the fence, the proposed fence was up, up here.
I think the proposed fence, oh, if you put your pencil back, where those, where those, no, it's a-
Yes, I'm seeing it back.
Kind of where the black dots are, I believe those are the mitigation plans. And I think the fence was either right in front or right behind that. And I believe that is where the berm and the, the plantings on top of the berm currently are.
Okay. Well, I was out there, and it, there isn't enough there. So, I'd like to see more plantings put in place there, down between the shed and the, and the, with that, there was some cherries cut down by the, by that end of the, lower end of the property line, and then up to that cedar. I, I, I don't believe there's enough plantings mitigation done on this end to try to shield that space. That's just my personal feeling from observation.
I think-
Are there 15 trees, are there 15 trees there now? Have they been planted?
I did-
Again, I-
Let's just try to-
They're going to grow.
Mike, 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 hold on. What we want to do is we want to have kind of a flow of discussion. So-
I, I apologize.
Okay. So, just, you know, bring it over to Alicia. Alicia can then direct it. That's the best way to do it. Thanks.
Does, Alicia, did you want me to answer your concerns?
Sure.
So, again, I think the reason that we're proposing to put off final approval of the parking lot lights and, and that extra, you know, knocking an hour off at night is for this exact reason. We want somebody to take an independent look at it. We want somebody to get out there and say, what did you do? What could you have done? Is what you did as good or better? And if it's not as good or better, how do we address the concerns that, and quite honestly, they do have the benefit of not seeing it on a plan, but actually seeing it in a field. So, that if the lighting expert said, here's the area, and, and you pointed out a great point, which was a representation of a candela level at a corner of a property as being kind of a standard. And so, if we brought in an independent lighting expert, we could specifically ask them, is that standard being met? If that standard is not being met, is it going to take two more trees or 22 more trees? What would be the actual, real incremental value of adding a fence, or, or two trees, or six trees, or 12 trees, so that somebody in the field can help all of us make the decision? I think this is no different than what the Chairman said earlier, which is, we took the risk with the berm. It doesn't appear that it's 100% satisfied everybody. And I think that's why we were thinking, rather than saying, okay, let's, let's agree to add six more trees, or let's agree to add 100 feet of fence, we'd rather get an expert out there. And that way, it's not, you know, an effort to mitigate it. It's an instruction for what could be done or what should be done based on a, a real live assessment in Mr. Walker, did you have a question for me?
It would be good if I could catch you right there.
Yep.
I think what you said is relative and pertinent, and it has merit, especially what Alicia's worried about is that low spot. But I think what could really mitigate a lot of that is, and I'm not a lighting expert, you know, but I understand the difference between a spotlight and an LED and that flood land, flood light, you know. So, if the major culprit seem to be the lights on the ice cream building, and maybe one of the other lights on the top of the driving range building, that could really make everything a lot easier. If someone put in a yellow light or a softer light, it's still flooded instead of spot. I mean, that would make a lot of plantings less. I mean, I think you guys are kind of missing some of the issue.
I, I agree with you 100%. And I, I do think that, so the whole point of bringing in an independent person is, we're not going to have somebody who's going to advocate what's already out there. It's for somebody to come in and look at what's out there and do exactly what you just said, which is, this light has too much light in the blue spectrum. You need to change it with this bulb. Or quite honestly, they could say, you need to change it with this fixture. It's to get a third party, nobody that participated, nobody that designed it. Come up with somebody new and independent, give them a list of instructions, get out there. It may be four more trees. Mr. Walker, it may be no more trees. It may be replace all the light bulbs.
It makes sense to me because if, if it's light mitigation, and like was mentioned, if it's intensity of light at the lot line, you can do an awful lot with what, you know, and still get that. I mean, we changed our streetlights within our town, and they're kind of an ambient yellow. They're not as bright, but you know, they, they light up the roads. So, that might be a good place to really save yourself a lot of berm and a lot of trees is to use a really good lighting expert there.
Agree.
I just, what concerns me is you had a really good lighting expert. At least you had one, and that went by the wayside. So, you need to have a little more, I guess, I have to have a little more value in you promising that you're going to have this because other lighting expert, because you had a good one. And you went, but that, he went by the wayside.
Well, Alicia, you're going to have the ability for the final occupancy permit. All these standards really kind of have to be met. So, we still, you know, they're going to do the best to mitigate light.
Okay.
Alicia, if I, if I could, do you have anything else? Or you're good?
I'm good for now.
Okay. So, I just wanted to direct for a second over to Brian. So, Brian, we've had kind of something put before our board, and I wanted just guidance from your perspective as to how we would handle this suggestion of where we're at now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, if I may just ask for one or two clarifications, I kind of addressed that more directly. And one is just on what Attorney Rosen just mentioned in the last sort of topic was, we know where this expert would come from. And correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was that the applicant would fund a peer review. So, it would be the, the town's expert. So, it wouldn't be the applicant selecting and hiring, and then presenting an expert that would advocate or represent the interests of the applicant, be a third-party reviewer that had a duty of loyalty to the town as a third-party reviewer, and the applicant would just pay for that. So, if I'm mistaken about that, please correct me. But that was, that was my understanding of, of how that might operate. I'm going to pause for a second just to see if anyone's correcting me.
No, our understanding is it should be somebody independent. It should not be somebody that I go handpick, nor do I think it should be anybody that has been previously involved in the project. It would be, you know, I, I expect Attorney Winter that you have pulled in lighting experts on other projects. I'm happy to submit with you, submit to you a list of names of people I've either seen for or against on other projects. And I think it's looking for somebody with a completely fresh set of eyes.
Okay. So, I think that gets to the, your comment, Alicia, just in terms of sort of the, the value of that service being provided. There'd be independence to it, and it would be a fresh set of eyes that would be selected, you know, essentially jointly, but driven by, by the town. So, there would be a certain amount of newness and value to that, if that's the direction the board's going. So, to get to the question, I can foresee a couple of different possibilities from here. And I'm going to make the, you know, assumption that if the boards, you know, continue on in this direction, and, you know, I don't know if that's true or not, but assuming the boards want to continue on in this direction, there's probably two ways to approach this. And you may want to ask the applicant to clarify as to what their position might be on what I'm about to say when I'm finished. And one is, you know, along the way here, we've voted, the boards have voted superseding orders that essentially constitute interim approvals and allow certain things to happen. But certain things short of a final approval and short of closing the public hearing and drafting an actual written determination on the site plan and on the special permit. So, there's an opportunity to do it that way. But the other option that comes to mind is if it's the applicant's intent by suggesting that the board issue, or the board issue approvals that don't include the lighting and that reduce the hours of operation accordingly, another possibility is to close the public hearing and instruct counsel to prepare such a decision, consistent with the board's wishes, as they may be. And it wouldn't include, you know, any permission to activate lighting. And you can tease that out however you want in terms of, you know, the pole lighting, building lighting, et cetera, et cetera. And then that decision could also explicitly contemplate a process by which the applicant could then fulfill certain requirements, including this peer review that's being discussed before a future request is made and considered by the board to then allow the activation of the lighting. So, that would wrap up this public process. But it just, the approval wouldn't include any lighting. So, the app, then it would be incumbent upon the applicant to sort of go through this, yet another modification process, and come back to the board and say, okay, now we're going to talk about the lighting in a separate process. So, it depends on whether or not the applicant and the boards, of course, are interested in keeping the public hearing open and allowing that peer review process to play itself out and to keep sort of this rolling approval process moving in that direction. Or close the public hearing, issue a decision that's, doesn't include, you know, full approval of the site and lighting. It includes something short of that, meaning the golf center with no lighting. So, I see those as, you know, two, two ends of a spectrum. There may be other options in between. So, I would leave that for the boards to consider.
So, for clarification, Brian, on this second option that you disclosed, it would basically be business without lighting. And if you want lighting, come back to us in the future.
That's correct. So, we close the public hearing process, written decisions would come out of that. The boards would be done. The pending applications would be over, and a decision would issue. The applicant would have the benefit of an approval, but it wouldn't be a full approval. It would be missing the lighting.
Peter, is the first scenario where the public hearing is still open, would that be able to entertain a daytime opening and without lights also?
Yes. And in fact, if, if the board wanted to go, or boards wanted to go in that direction, the way I might propose it would be something similar to the superseding orders that we've drafted in the past. And it would say something along the lines of, you know, the board, you know, notwithstanding any prior, you know, vote or decision of the board, the board provisionally and conditionally approves the August, I think, 25th site plan to the extent necessary to authorize town- to the extent necessary to authorize town officials, including the building inspector, to issue temporary certificates of occupancy to allow operation on the site. And then you would list out, you know, the limitations and parameters of that approval. So one of those, of course, would be no lighting. Another one would be no operation before a certain time or after a certain time. So you would, you spell it out in that fashion. So that could be another superseding order of the boards. But then, of course, the public hearing would remain open. And the two pending applications would march on to the next evening, whenever the boards met again to consider whichever step would come next.
Attorney Winter, could I ask a question?
Go ahead, Attorney.
As part of that, because we would want this lighting peer consultant to be involved, and we would like the boards to be involved, or at least a representative of each board to be involved, to work with you and I, to engage this individual and, and, you know, so that you can instruct them on what you want them to look for. Do you need to have something open and pending so that you have the ability to do that?
Yes, is the answer to that. We would need to, I mean, that would be evidence that the boards would take in at a public hearing. So it could either be the current public hearing as it rolls on, or it would be in conjunction with a further application. So if we close this one out, we wouldn't get to another peer review in consideration of the lighting until a subsequent application was filed, and there was a new public hearing for the board to effectuate that process. But yeah, we would have to take the peer review comments and frankly, the funding for it. You know, the 53G, you know, funding that we would have to arrange for, that all has to go through that, that application and public hearing process. So that would require an open hearing.
Which means we'd have to submit an application, notice it, schedule a hearing, make the request at a future hearing to engage, fund it. Like, I do feel like, and out of respect to both my client and everybody on the board, I'd like to just keep it moving and get it done. And I do feel like if we do close it now, that precludes the ability for at least another what is six weeks, if not longer, to be out there and engage a lighting expert. And we want to do it and just get it done. We want to get somebody out there.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Rosen. I think I understand the direction that you would like to go in. So I think the board members have an opportunity to kind of contemplate the discussion thus far. So I think it's time I'd like, Larry, did you have a question or were you just stretching?
No, I was just stretching. Thank you.
Great, 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 great. If there's no other questions from any of the board members, what I'd like to do is kind of open it up for any public questions or comments at this time. And so I'm going to have this go through Martha with our hand raising aspect. I know somebody was out there before wanting to speak, but I don't see that individual now. So is there anyone from the public?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, Alicia.
Can I interrupt? Did you want to read the correspondence into the record?
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, yes, yes. Do I want to?
I don't have it queued up.
Martha, do we have our correspondence available to be read into the record or recognized?
I have them here. So they could either be read into the record or at least noted for the record, whatever the boards would prefer.
I think noted is probably a good way to go.
Right.
Unless there's something very significant, very different that's coming to us that we haven't had a flavor of before.
So these are from the butters. So one was from Laura Hanlon on August 6th. Shall I just give the names and dates?
You know, do this, why don't you kind of, you might want to actually say content. I'm sorry, I forgive you misdirection.
And I can read it. This is largely with respect to the upcoming site walk on August 7th that was scheduled. And Ms. Hanlon reiterated her concern about the lighting and the 50-foot poles. And she still wanted to see, see in writing that those 50-foot poles were off the table and had concern for any visual impact on their property from the site lighting. And noted that currently there's heavy foliage and would want to see what they look like from October to May. And she sent some photographs of the trees without, without foliage. And they show the berm with the evergreens that were planted on top of it. Then on Friday, August 21st, Jessica Carbone sent emails with photos from the tree clearing that happened on March 9th. So there were a number of photos that were attached to those which were forwarded on to the board members. Deb Carbone sent a photograph, actually not quite sure when it was taken, but some time ago showing, showing the trees around the shed where there's, you know, substantial gap right now. And then Jessica Carbone sent a long email on August 24th on behalf of all of them, Deb and George and Jessica and Mike. And I think Jess is here. I don't know if she wants to speak to some of these items.
If you want.
And there was, there was one.
Hold on just for a second, Jess.
From Claire Dix, expressing, still expressing concern about the driveway, the narrowness of the entrance. And that was August 13th.
Thank you, Martha, for summarizing those and putting those together. And thank you, Alicia, for keeping me honest in this process. Okay, with those being noted in the record, for public comment, Jess, did you want to start us off?
Sure. You know, as Martha mentioned, my email was rather lengthy. We took some time and took the attorney's advice and wrote down our questions that we had and presented them, hoping that we would get answers to all of them tonight. One of the biggest things that we've heard tonight, or I should say that we haven't heard tonight, is the shed area. There's, there's no mitigation there right now. And that's more for security than it is for blocking any light penetration and actually being able to see people walk to and from the short game area. So I really would like to understand what the plan is for that area. I also want to point out that all of the growth that the board has seen on our property line is on our property line, minus the 15 trees that, you know, Eric has mentioned that he's planted as part of the mitigation. So if, you know, once, once all the leaves drop, that's not there. If we choose to cut any of that, he has no other foliage there to actually block our view. And really is one of the biggest things that we were kind of shocked about with the lighting is it's not the parking lot lights that shine on our property so much as it is the building lights. You know, we've, they cast shadows on both of the houses, as the boards have seen. They're lighting up the trees in the backyard. They're casting light onto the yard itself. I have a nice, large, tall light pole that is right along my property line that I see as soon as I pull up my driveway every night now. So there's, there's still some concerns there that haven't quite been addressed. And I also would like to understand, you know, if the boards, and maybe you'll answer this as we kind of go on here, but just, you know, what Attorney Winter had just said, if we were to approve it right now with no lights, and when we say no lights, what does that mean? Does that mean no outside lighting at all? No lighting on the buildings, no parking lot lights, no nothing? Or does that mean that there would still be some building lights that would be able to be on? So we would want some further explanation there as well.
If I got that right, Jess, you had about four questions in there.
There were actually six in the letter, but.
Okay, all right. Is there someone who would like to address the questions from Jessica?
Were they directed to us or were they directed to Brian?
I believe they were directed to, to the applicant, yes.
Okay. So right now, our theory is get a light expert in and tell us what they think needs to be done. I think that's what we'd like to do. We don't want to keep speculating that a berm will do it, 15 trees will do it, three trees will do it. We want a professional to come in and be able to advise the town on what the appropriate thing to do is. I want a professional expert to tell us if we're at 64 Candela or not. I want a professional to tell us whether or not there is or is not light intrusion and what does need to be done. I think as to your last question, what does no lights mean? Again, my, my request, our request would be no lights in the parking lot, no lights on the barn, but that lights on the buildings themselves, i.e. the pro shop would be allowed to be on, but an hour less than they were previously permitted. Again, otherwise, we then have to have all of our employees out by sundown, which would then essentially cut an hour and a half to two hours out of the end of the day. So if you're asking, if, if we're given the opportunity to ask for what we would like, it would be just the lights on the pro shop? And are there a couple of lights on like the small buildings behind them? But it would exclude the barn, it would exclude the parking lots.
So I just want to, two, two things. I think we need to answer the question about the security and the space behind the shed. And did I understand you correctly that it would take an hour to an hour and a half difference if there was no lighting involved or it would interfere with the operations of the business? It takes that long to shut down the business?
Well, so we're closing, we would be closing an hour earlier. And if you're calling your approvals, there was, I believe, and Martha said it might have been 15 minutes, I thought it was 30 minutes. But there's that gap period of time between the time you tell the employees to leave, I mean, your customers to leave. Somebody's going to go around, they're going to pick up trash on the ground. Somebody's going to lock up the golf ball. Somebody's going to, you know, walk around and make sure everything's done. Somebody's going to clean the restrooms. So I do think it's going to take 30 minutes to get employees out of there from the time that the customers do leave. I think that's probably a reasonable assessment.
Yeah, but not an hour to an hour and a, an hour and a half to two hours, as you stated.
No, I was saying, lose an hour and a half if we cut back the hours.
I see, I see, I see how you're submitting. Got it, got it. Appreciate that, Attorney Rosen. Thank you very much for clarification.
Thank you for asking.
Okay. And so the other, only other thing is the security component in the shed and filling in behind the shed.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to, to that. Security, I, I mean, I suppose this is a matter of personal opinion about this. There was never any security proposed for this project. I don't know why it would be needed now. But if it's a matter of, if I could share my, well, I don't know if I need to share my screen. Everyone knows, does everyone know what shed that she was talking about? Or I'm happy to show people where that is and what we might be able to do there. We actually talked to Mike Carbon about, about a few trees down in that location to screen that area. And I don't believe that Eric would be opposed to putting those in. It was just that I think that we had talked about how some of the other mitigation may have replaced the need for those. But if that's not the case, then I don't think Eric is opposed to putting a couple, you know, screening trees down in that location, which we did actually talk to a butter about. So I'm aware of that.
Thank you, Mike. That, that's helpful in this discussion so that there's a, there's an open doorway to do some more tree planting and mitigation around that shed area to give some comfort and barrier. So that's helpful. Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate Eric wanting to do that. Are there any other questions from the public? Do you see anything, Martha, because I don't?
I'm not seeing any raised hands. I have a question, actually.
Go ahead, Martha, please.
For the lighting, I think Attorney Rosen said that there would be no lighting in the parking lot. What about the pole lights that are illuminating the patio area right now outside the ice cream serving windows? Would it be all pole lights that would be off?
Yes.
Okay. So just the pole mounted ones are what you're asking for right now on the pro shop?
I think Jeff's suggestion about, you know, angulating, toning down lights, maybe going from spots to something else, changing the color of the hue, I think those are all great, great suggestions, Jeff, to help with the building lighting.
Okay. And there is now a raised hand from Janine.
Janine, please go ahead.
Hi. I was just curious. I didn't know, Martha, if you had gotten an answer to my question to you a week or two ago about when the five-year period for the tree planting, I forget what we called it.
The escrow fund.
Yeah, the escrow fund, that's right. When that period started, is it, is it from when he started? Or is it from when you approve? Or he gets final, you know, approval? Or when does that time period start?
Might refer that to the attorneys, actually. My understanding was that it would be when, essentially when occupancy is granted. But I don't know if my interpretation is correct.
I'm going to defer to Brian because I saw him pick up a piece of paper. So I'm guessing he actually has the decision in his hand.
You guessed correctly. But I'm not sure it answers the question. It's condition five, by the way, that I'm referencing, and it's on page seven of the special permit decision. And it's, I believe it's the special permit decision dated November 14th, 2017. And it states that the applicant will put and maintain $10,000 in escrow for the first five years of the project's operation for the purposes, and it goes on. So that word "operation" suggests to me that when a certificate of occupancy issues and it's up and running, that's when it starts. But that's the term that was used to define it.
I have another question, actually. Speaking of that escrow account now, because now it's, the applicant attorney, Michael Rosen, has stated many times through the whole, whole public process that they get what happened. There was a subcontract to commit and cut that land down, and he gets it and he owns it. And they really have been really, you know, upfront about making, making it right. And if we go their route that they're asking and issue an occupancy permit and do the lighting separately to mitigate all of this stuff, at what point that $10,000 escrow fund comes squishy? Because the mitigation should have been done before that $10,000 comes into play. That was supposed to be over and above so that once they're open and operating after the mitigation, once they're up and running, that was supposed to be mitigating any additional sound screening, not only from the Carbonis, but from all the surrounding property. I mean, we don't know if, if golf balls are going to stop flying into the Hanlon's property. There may need to be a fence, I mean, a big net put up there. So I don't know. And maybe that's a question for the attorneys as to how do we delineate that line where the monies that are supposed to be for some, for one certain thing remain for that one certain thing?
So just for clarification, Alicia, you're saying that part of the mitigation should have been doing all this stuff, and then this escrow account would be, once all the mitigation was completed, to run for the five years?
That was my understanding.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So I view them as two separate and distinct things from, from my personal perspective. Mitigation is mitigation. There was damage caused. As you say, Eric owns it, and whatever damage was caused, he hired the tree contractor. It's ours. The $10,000 tree fund, actually, if you read section five, dealt with the fairway lighting, the 50-foot fairway poles. So I do view them as separate and distinct. On the other hand, we also now aren't doing the 50-foot fairway poles. So I don't know. It, it's an interesting question, but the $10,000 was intended, I believe, to cover the fairway lighting.
Brian?
Hey. So before I get to the, you know, what's covered under it. So before I get to the, you know, what's covered under it, um, let me just address the process a little bit. So if. Um, tonight's uh, public hearing ends and um. If the, yeah, but not a close of the public hearing and it continues on, I, I don't think we address that because I think that's a separate issue. I think that the mitigation that gets approved, constructed, shown on the plan, um, is a construction issue. Um, and the, the tree fund is a security issue. Um, so it's, it comes afterwards. So typically you have. Um, a security provision and, and any kind of approval to cover the what ifs after things are constructed in accordance with an approved plan. But it doesn't work out quite the way everybody intended. So it's something that comes after it. So if for. Uh, the alternative version is it's something I would want to put in in a final decision of the boards. Um, and I think it appeared in the special permit decision originally. So if we, if the boards get to the point where we close the public hearing. And we're charged, I'm charged with drafting a final decision, that would be a security provision that would go into that final decision. So after all the mitigation is approved and constructed and the site becomes fully operational, then that mitigation would exist. And, and would be triggered at that time. So then, then that fund would start to become. Um, you know, sort of operational for what it is. So we would get it, we would get to it at that point in the final decision.
So I think in order to, to move, because I really want him to open and I really want him to get this project going. I really, I mean, I really do. Um, but would we have to agree on the lights withstanding because we're going to have an out, an outside consultant look at that? Would we need to agree on mitigation? Because I don't believe that they've mitigated enough for the tree cutting. It, I mean, I think he can do it, but I don't think he's done it to date. At least that's what, I mean, what I'm thinking. If you've done it differently. Can you explain that to me?
I, I, I think that the mitigation, so and correct me if I'm wrong. The mitigation on the west side is not the issue. The mitigation on the Carbone property line is the issue.
Yes.
And I think the concept is we caused harm. That's what we're bringing this expert in. The, the, the entire application here is to seek an approval of a modification to a plan. That was necessitated by a, a, an error on my client's behalf. And what we're trying to do is get a modification to that plan. That modification includes mitigation. And I think that mitigation of impact is the impact to uh, light intrusion onto the Carbone's property. And I, if the lighting expert comes back and says you need three more trees. We would ask that you respect the lighting expert's opinion. If the lighting expert comes back and says you need thirty more trees. Three different light fixtures, ten extra shields. And you need to change every light bulb out to a color that, that Mr. Walker picks. My belief would be, we would have to respect that, that third party expert's decision. And. That would be incorporated into the next, you know, if we're keeping this open or if we're closing it and submitting a new application. That would be in, incorporated into whatever that next decision might be. So I do expect that. And again, this is just the way I vision it and sometimes I'm kind of black and white on how I vision things. I envision some type of decision, whether it's with this matter open or closed, that has a condition. And I would call that condition the lighting condition. And it would identify that an expert's going to be brought in. The town has to approve the expert. They can't have any prior relationship with Eric. Eric has to pay for it. That expert is going to have a duty of loyalty to the town. That expert is, is going to report back to the joint boards. And then the boards would then adopt a condition. That would replace the tree expert condition with additional mitigation. Or, you know, again, knock on wood, confirmation that none was needed.
So you're talking still just, you're still just talking about light mitigation, right?
So i- i- if I can, Alicia, I think what we need to do is get our. Direction going, the needs, uh, you know, they're, they're going to come up.
Peter, you froze for a minute there.
Yeah, you froze.
I, I promised Martha I was going to do that at least once during the meeting. Um, I, I think what we need to do is not get caught up in the weeds here. Cause I think a lot of these details can be worked out between uh, attorney, uh, Rosen, attorney, uh, winner. Uh, as to how that package should be configured. I think we need a general concept here. Let the details be worked out. Um, and Martha, of course, you're, you're, you're inside in uh, uh, detail into that so that we can get. The pathway going, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Um, I see.
A raised hand. Janine?
Hi, I, I, I just wanted to understand. Lighting right now for me is not a real issue with all the foliage and whatnot. I mean, I could see him. It's not that significant and it's not. You know, horrible in my yard, but once the foliage goes away, you know, I've, I've said from the beginning, I want to see what this looks like. You know, all up and running and then if I needed a tree or two. So I'm just clarifying, uh, Mr. Rosen. Are you saying that those trees were really just for the back forty and not like on my side where most of. Uh, the trees were all removed? I mean, my side of the uh, had, had more trees all taken out and I know he's put some back. Um, but not all that were taken, let me tell you, because I can see clear too much as hill in, you know, in the fall and, and winter. So. Um, and that lighting at that time is going to be, I'm, you know, I have to wait and see what it looks like.
Certainly. So I, I think two things. The first is, again, my understanding of the tree fund was to mitigate from the fifty foot poles. But that does include your property because those poles, if you recall, were at a higher height. And actually the way they're directed, you know, you, whereas the Hamlin's are down a hill on the other side. You're not down a hill. There's, there's not a, a, a peak and then a valley to where you are. The second is when I'm talking about a tree expert on, a lighting expert on mitigation, we want them to come look at the site. We want them to come tell us, did we do the lighting right or didn't we do the lighting right? If, if I were charged with instructing them, I would tell them to look at the entire property and tell me that what is built. Is at least as good, if not better than what the town originally approved. And that would be my request to them. And if it's not, then I would want them to tell me where I had issues and how they would recommend I resolve them. And that would include your property. That would include the Hamlin's property. It would include the Carbone's property. It's. A lighting mitigation expert.
All right. Um, thank you, thank you. Um, okay, I don't, I don't see any additional public questions or.
Uh, Dale Williams sets his hand up.
Uh, Dale Williams, go ahead, please.
I believe the project has reached a point where a conditional operating certificate is probably warranted. There are things we don't know that we don't know. And that's why a conditional permit makes sense to me. As an example. The sunflower field down the street of Scarlet Road took three years to come up with a good plan of traffic flow. That impacted the road, the butters, the town. It took three years. There were probably things about this project from a lighting, from a traffic flow. Uh, things like that, the mitigation, the trees. It's going to take time to really see how that plays out. And that's why I think a conditional operating permit makes sense because it gives a chance to see how the operation goes. And what the impact is to the butters and to the town. Thanks.
Thank you, Dale. Appreciate your comment. Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, okay. At this time, I don't think I see any, anyone else. Um, so I'd like to turn to my vice chair. And I'd like you to drive for a couple of seconds. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, well, you know, I, I want to um. Um, uh, echo what Alicia had to say about getting this operation up and running. I think it's in everyone's interest that we do that. And, and believe me, I'd love to see Eric um, up there and, and put this thing to bed and um. Uh, for everyone's interest, the town's interest, his interest, the butter's interest. Um, although the idea of um, uh, making a, a, a final decision on this application at this point is appealing. I don't really think that it's the best way to go. And I'm, I, I agree with Attorney Rosen that it's probably going to. Simply delay the um, uh, a decision on the uh. Uh, on the very important lighting issues. Um, I think the superseding order of conditions is probably the appropriate thing to do at this point. It gives us a little more flexibility and I suspect that if we were to i- issue a final decision now. And leave an, an issue as important as the lighting out there unresolved. Uh, I think we're going to find that there are probably issues that arise that we didn't anticipate. So I am inclined to support the idea of a superseding order of conditions that would allow um, Eric to at least uh, uh, open on a conditional basis.
Um, do you want to construct that?
Do I?
Yeah, in the form of a.
Well, I, I guess procedurally, I, I mean, I, Brian Winter had um, some, I, I think has some thoughts on it. Probably articulate that what needs to go into it better than, than I can. Um, uh, but uh, I don't know if we can procedurally. Um, and it's going to take some time to construct and to be reviewed and voted on by both boards. And I don't know procedurally in the interim if we can authorize uh, Eric to go ahead and at any level.
So I guess I'm going to punt this back to Brian.
Um, I have um, what I might refer to as a, a zygote of a proposed motion. Um, contemplating that the boards may reach this point. Um, and I have it in a typed up form. Uh, so if, if the will of the boards is such that, you know, you're willing to sort of chew on it and talk about it. See what it looks like, try it on for size. Um, I'm happy to forward that. Uh, nobody's seen it. It's just something that I've been working on. If you think it's ready to, to, to bring up as a talking point, I can, I can share that and it can be a talking point. If you um, think that the idea really hasn't um, uh, been fleshed out and evolved to the point. Um, where we're quite ready to, to see that and maybe we need some more comments and some more interaction on it before. It can be well rounded out and I can continue to work on it. And um, when it's in um, a more evolved form, I can share it then. Um, whatever the will of the boards might be.
I would, uh, I'd like to see your zygote talking point begin. If that's okay.
Would it be for Brian to be made a co-host and he could share it on?
Oh, absolutely. That'd be wonderful. Thank you. Brian, you can, you can share.
Let's see what happens.
Close down all that other stuff on your screen.
Right, you are.
Oh, wait, I jumped the gun.
Oh, yeah, you're now a co-host.
So for, can anyone see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so let me, let me make it one page instead of two pages side by side. So maybe more will fit on the screen here. So I was typing while, while you were discussing a little bit, so forgive any typographical problems, but. Um, I hope you can all see it well enough to read it. Um, I can make it larger if needs be.
Fine.
Yes.
No, it's not.
Want me to bring it up a notch and make it a little bit bigger?
That'd be fine. Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Great.
How about there?
Perfect. So we can see about halfway through three. So if you want to read through it, that'd be great.
I'll just read it. I move that notwithstanding any prior superseding conditions uh, adopted by this board to the contrary. The applicant's application and plans as most recently revised on eight twenty-five twenty. Are provisionally and temporarily approved only to the extent necessary to authorize uh, the town officials, in particular. Uh, the town's building inspector to permit temporary use and occupancy of the subject site provided. Prior to any use and occupancy, all of the conditions items set forth in the conservation commission's August twenty, two thousand twenty list must be completed. To the commission's satisfaction. Paragraph two, prior to any use and occupancy. Uh, all of the conditions items set forth in the building inspectors' August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty list must be completed to the building inspector's satisfaction. Paragraph three, prior to any use and occupancy, all of the conditions items set forth in the board of health's August twentieth. Two thousand twenty and August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty list must be completed to the board of health satisfaction. Um, no operations activities are allowed after. Um, you'll see, if you can see my cursor, times and dates. I cut and pasted those right out of the two thousand seventeen special permit decision with one change. I took this column and I reduced them all by an hour. Um, so this used to say eight thirty P M between September fifteenth through September thirtieth and now it says seven thirty P M. So that's. You can follow that through for each one of those and you could track that back to, I think it's page seven of the special permit decision where it talks about hours. Um, paragraph five, you'll see I've highlighted a question mark. Uh, no exterior lighting of any kind is permitted at any time. And then in. Parenths highlighted with a question mark, except security lighting only on the pro shop building, question mark. Um, this order shall not, continuing on to the, the next page. This order shall not constitute final action by the board or approval of the applications before it. Um, and any of the plans and submissions submitted in conjunction with therewith. It is the intent of the board only to provide this limited and temporary permission as an accommodation to the applicant during the ongoing public hearing process. While the applicant continues to finalize its mitigation plan, in particular. The lighting plan, which shall include the funding of a lighting peer review by an expert selected by the board. In doing so, the board recognizes this is a highly unorthodox step without any sanctioned footing in the traditional zoning process contemplated by the town zoning bylaws or the zoning act. Notwithstanding, the board acknowledges the difficulties of finalizing and reviewing the mitigation plan in light of the history. Of this matter and the impacts that the consequently lengthy public hearing process may have on the applicant's business. This provisional and temporary approval shall be null and void upon the violation of any of the above conditions and shall expire, well. Well, I don't think we need an expiration at this point, but anyway, and shall expire as set forth above. Uh, it is the board's desire that any permit, certificate or approval issued by any town official be conditioned as may be appropriate. So as to require full and complete adherence to all the conditions set forth herein. And that any such permit, certificate or approval accordingly be rescinded, revoked or expire as may be appropriate under the circumstances. So as to be consistent with this order.
That's a very nice zygote. Thank you very much.
A lot of verbiage. I don't know if it's, has technically everything you need. Uh, I think there's still some refinements that the boards need to discuss. Um, the hours of operation, which buildings would be lit, you know, et cetera. So there, there, there are probably some, um. Some refinements that uh, need to go into it.
So I guess my concern that I'll just pop right in right now. Uh, I'm looking at the hours of operation, you know, I, I, six thirty. Uh, November, that means things shut down. So sun, sunset, I would think is. Woody, you can chime in on me here, but it's probably.
Four thirty.
Four thirty-ish, right. And so we're going two hours beyond sunset. And so then we shut down and then we have a half an hour for, for cleanup and whatnot. So that's still pretty torched up for a while in the darkness.
Um, can I make a suggestion?
Please do.
Um, I, I like the idea of closing at dusk. You know, as, if dusk, as dusk comes, I think the Leo J Martin facility closed at dusk, a lot of golf courses closed at dusk. Um, until they can get the light, the lighting squared away, um. I think if they close at dusk, that'll give the help, you know, fifteen minutes, twenty, you know, half an hour to clean up, but. Um, I don't think that they need to wait to clean up. I think they can clean up as. It's closing. I know they're not going to, you know, stand, but I think that, I think dusk. I, I, I want to throw that out to the boards and see what the boards think about, about that idea. And, and once the applicant planning like opening, are you going to open at nine? Is, is that your idea, Eric?
Eight A M.
You're going to open at eight?
Yep. Yep.
I'll, I'll chime in a little bit. The ice cream stand could take longer than thirty minutes to clean, especially during COVID and everything else. And there's a lot of issues, you know, you don't want anything to not be put in the proper container so it doesn't, you know, there's liability to unfreeze in your, I mean, it could take longer than thirty minutes to close down that type of facility. It's kind of like a mini restaurant. So there could be some lights on for like what Attorney Rosen said for, you know, that forty minutes afterwards. So that could play into what we're talking about. You're certainly going to need the lights on the ice cream stand if people are coming to get ice cream and then the people, and those seem to be the most offensive lights. So it'd be good to have that lighting person start to come in and work on those lights. So, and whatever other lights are really offensive, so, because it could, you know, make everything go a lot better.
Good points, Jeff.
If I could chime in on this one too, I'm going to kind of go with what Jeff was saying after being in the hospitality industry for a number of years without any COVID behind us. Shutting down any kind of eating facility does take a tremendous amount of time. You have, you have your cleanup, you've got your restock, you've got to take your trash out and secure that. And it usually, even under the best conditions, can take forty-five minutes to an hour to get everything shut down and put into place so that it can be properly opened up the next day.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you, Leslie. Maybe that goes into the business operation plan, you know, maybe if they're shutting down at dusk, you know, food stops, you know, an hour before that so that they have plenty of time to do that. Our, our concern is trying to make sure that we get a handle on the lighting situation. The operation of the business will be, I, I think upon the applicant to figure out how they're going to do that within the confines of when we're trying to just make sure that there's, we have a handle on the lighting thing. So I appreciate what you're saying very much and, and I, I get that. And I think that might have to be backed into or out of, you know, however they do business. Our concern right now is to try to make this thing work with what the parameters that are there and get him, we're working towards temporary occupancy. So I don't want to get hung up on what they have to do to make it work.
Peter?
Yes.
You know, this is getting really hybrid, but you know, the main lighting needs to be on for people that are coming to the facility if the lights are on at all before they close. But you know, those offensive lights can certainly maybe be shut off and some of the more ambient lights be used for people to get to their cars. So I don't know. I can't remember how it's all set up, you know?
I don't think there was any ambient lighting.
But your, your concept of a hybrid, Jeff, is I think very, very noteworthy and maybe is something that might need to come in with the lighting consultant. So I think it's, it's a great way to go. Thank you.
I'm concerned, Pete, with the except security lighting only on the pro shop building. I know that one light on the ice cream side showed, shown directly into the Carbone's home. So I don't, and it's a sharp light, so I don't know if that, that should be on at all.
Um, let's, I got you, I got you. Let's, let's button up number four first. So do you want to have no operation of activities are allowed after thirty minutes after dusk?
Yeah, that's what I like.
Okay.
Thirty minutes after dusk for, meaning people leaving the facility that are using it and then shut down?
Yeah, no, it's all buttoned up by thirty minutes after dusk. So whatever time they need to, to wind things down, if the pro shop can stay open later and then, you know, it only takes a couple of minutes to shut down and the food, food station takes longer, they shut it down earlier, whatever, but thirty minutes after dusk button up, everybody's gone. That, that way we, we have, we have a period on the lighting, you know, at least until we have a consultant that can give us all the direction, we, we have a roadmap.
This is just temporary, right?
Right, yeah. Until we get there, yeah.
Brian, is there any reason that we can't put a provision in here to, that this is the order until, and I'm sorry, not articulating this well, that gives the board the, the option of bringing it forward at any point for further order? In other words, to read until further order of the board and also would give the applicant the opportunity to come in and ask for relief at any point.
Right, so that, that's always true, but there's no harm in acknowledging that explicitly. So as long as the public hearing is open, the applicant is free to make a request and the boards are welcome to consider it and make any amendments to this as might be necessary at that time.
I mean, frankly, the hours that you suggested here seem reasonable to me, especially if, if they turn out to be unworkable, that the board can always bring it forward on its own and make any necessary adjustments.
Peter, can I say a few things?
Sure, Eric. Hi.
Hi, I've been pretty quiet. A couple of things, obviously, thank you for everybody for coming tonight. I know it's been a long process. The one thing with closing and COVID, you know, we want to be by the book. We want to do the cleaning. We want to be correct. The range, obviously picking, we need to prepare the golf balls for the morning too. So the guys picking the golf balls is something that could run later than thirty minutes. I'm just being honest, been in the golf business thirty plus years. We'll be working in the shed, but we're going to be cleaning balls, washing them, getting ready for the morning. So to do it within thirty minutes, it's hard. I mean, it's going to take a little longer than that. So, you know, the hours that Brian, Brian, you know, proposed originally, you know, would be a lot easier. Obviously, we're going to get everybody out of there if we can get them out quicker. But with COVID with the ice cream and the golf preparing for the next day, it's, you know, especially if you're going to cut in the morning, you got to get the golf balls up. You can't cut them because you're, the mower cuts golf balls. So it's, I need a little more time.
And may I, Mr. Chairman, just, it's been referred to twice, hours that, that I suggested. I just cut and paste these out of a previous decision. So I, I intend them only as talking points, not recommendations. So entirely up to the board what direction to go in.
Thank you. And I think, you know, Brian, along, along those lines, you know, we were, these, these hours were based on, you know, an appreciation of a lighting plan and an understanding and there were, I, I felt like there were more, there were more knowns when, when that was done. And there's a little bit more grayness here because let's, 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 let's let this lighting just sit for a couple of minutes, let it percolate in people's mind. And let's just, just for a second, jump down to Alicia's security question. No exterior lighting of any kind permitted at, at any time. Do you want? Larry, do you want to start first?
Do I want to? I'm not sure what you're asking me, Pete.
Do you have any questions or concerns with regards to this six, number four?
No, I mean, obviously that there has to be some light, you know, on the property. There's no question about that. No exterior lighting of any kind is permitted at any time.
But the security lighting, excuse me, Larry, that, that would just be something similar to like a house light, right? Doesn't have to be a bright, a bright light, like, you know, when you leave your light on, on in front of, in front of your house.
Yeah, I guess that's what it means. You know, people may interpret it differently. I don't know.
I mean, one thing is what we're allowing to occur here, and I hope Eric sees it, and I hope we see it, is if we can really move forward with an expert on the lighting and make lighting suitable so that basically, I mean, unless, if we, if Eric drags his feet, we drag our feet, nothing gets done. I mean, people coming off the highway are going to want to shoot up to the pro shop for Christmas. That could probably be Eric's biggest part of the season. So people buy a lot of stuff for Christmas from golf shops. So it behooves everyone to get this lighting because it's been my main fear forever, you know, so, you know, in a straight line so we can get it accomplished for whatever he wants to do going forward.
And honestly, I think by closing at dusk, it puts the onus on Eric to more quickly get what he needs to get done so he can get open more.
Except we're, you know, we're going to hire the lighting expert. So there's a lot, you know, we got to get moving too.
Well, we can't drag our feet on this. It's not fair to anyone.
Other question?
We haven't yet, I don't think.
Can I have a question?
Yeah.
In Brian's initial thing, number five, he said that the hours that he put down, he said it was a recent, a recent, a, a, recent, so what I want, a recent decision. Is that true, Brian?
No, so just to clarify, so I have an editable Word version of the November fourteenth-two thousand seventeen decision. And on condition six, which appears on page seven, states, the latest closing times allowed shall be as follows, and then that schedule appears. So I cut and paste from that two thousand seventeen decision.
I think that's a very reasonable schedule there. I would like, I mean, the man's still got to make a, he has to make a living.
Yeah, that's why, that's why this isn't permanent.
Right, but I'm saying, but for now, let's just, he has no lights, just let's let him run this, this schedule.
But I don't want him running lights with no lights in operation when it's dark with no lights.
He'll get the, he'll, he runs a business, he'll get the hang of it, when to get out people out safely.
So anyways, I'm, I'm in favor of any later than thirty minutes after dusk until we can get the lights.
Okay, I just want to kind of pull, pull my, my board for a sec. Larry, just give me your thoughts on security of the building and thirty minutes after dusk.
Well, you know, it, it, the term except security lighting only on the pro shop building, I don't have anything better.
Okay.
And I, I do like the, I, with all due respect to Alicia's point, I don't think the, the hours that are originally proposed, and while I shouldn't say proposed by Brian, but we're in the draft, they seem pretty reasonable to me. You know, we, we're not talking about lights at midnight here. And quite frankly, if there's, if there are going to be, if we're going to identify lighting issues and we do have them until seven thirty on September thirtieth, maybe that's going to help to inform our decision, you know, on lighting issues.
Thank you. George?
There's nothing right now, thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much, George. Leslie?
I really don't have anything. The slightest concern that I have is, you know, dusk will change on a daily basis. So how do you, you know, like in a week's time, it could change by ten or fifteen minutes going into the next season. So how do you, how do you handle that as far as, you know, people coming onto the property?
So you think the find hours might be, might be more beneficial?
I think so, yeah. I mean, it starts like even like the ice cream stand. So you just, you could put it's like, you know, ten to five. It's done and they can get in and out of there and, and it's all handled. And then on the pro shop side, leave those lights on for those people to come up.
Perfect, thank you. Woody, your thoughts on these two, two components?
Well, I think Leslie just actually had a good point because it's unfair to the customer base of Eric C. that to have times constantly changing. But other than that, no, I, I do think you need a set time there. Like the, like was laid out a minute ago and is now crossed out, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, Alicia, I got my feeling of my board. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to start pulling my board. I'm going to start with you, Jeff.
Actually, Leslie kind of came up with a hybrid that I was thinking of. I mean, there's not a, especially later in the season, the ice cream certainly tapers off when it's dark. So I mean, and it takes longest to clean the ice cream stand. And this might be something that Eric's going to have to kind of tell us what's, how long it does. But I mean, if the ice cream closes at dusk or before, that still could allow people to do some shopping where there would be more minimal lighting, which would be in the pro shop. So if that main culprit light stays on, it will at least give us the idea of how bad it is, like Larry said. So, you know, those, those times might not be bad. So maybe we got to think of something, and this might take a little time to craft.
Anything else, Jeff?
No, I'm good.
Mike?
Hey, like I said, I'm in favor of what, of what Brian said earlier, set times with set dates. So the people have a schedule and Eric has something to work with.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, good, thank you.
And Jerry?
Yeah, I think thirty minutes after dusk doesn't give them enough time for cleanup. I like the, the way the language was that later got struck out as number five was originally drafted by Brian. I like the set times.
Okay, anything else? No?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So Alicia, what, what does that really leave us with if we look at Brian's presentation? Are we still any later than thirty minutes after dusk, but the lights actually stay on to seven thirty because of cleanup? I mean, what was your intentions with that, Brian?
Are you asking me if you are? My intentions was that everything ends at those, that time. That was the, everything's off, no light.
Okay, good. So seven thirty there are, seven, yeah, good, good. Yep.
With the exception of the security light. So that, I mean, we could put the except security lighting in either provision. So my, my understanding of just security lighting is that it stays on. So that might continue, but that's up, obviously up to all of you.
I have a little concern with April first. I just Googled sundown, sunset in Boston on April first and it's seven ten PM. So that, I think
Bless you.
I'd rather see five PM from April, maybe through May, April fifteenth or, I don't know. Eric, you think you can get your lighting planned down before April first or next?
I think we're going to have a lighting expert starting looking tomorrow. I mean, I
We're not, we're not going to until we
I mean
can present one to
Right, to you guys.
Each board and they approve it.
Right, but we're going to start this process tomorrow to, to, to try to find someone to present to you. We're not going to wait because it's going to hurt my business having these hours. It's going to really cut into the business. The person after work coming to hit a few balls, it's going to be right at dusk. It's going to, it's going to hurt it.
All right, I'd like to make, I'd just like to change eight PM for April. I'd like to make that April fifteenth through September fourth because April fifteenth sunset is at seven thirty and that'll give him a half. No, yeah.
Are we really cutting that close to hours? I mean
Yeah, April fifteenth for September fourteenth, eight PM. So five PM from November sixteenth from April fourteenth and then eight PM.
There's a huge three hour difference there.
Yeah, it is.
Could, could we go March first to April first, six thirty?
Okay. So I'm going to make a suggestion here. Let's, let's stick with this template. I think this is a temporary situation. I don't see this extending months. And if we find, if, if we find the times don't work, the applicant can come back and we can tweak it. I just want to get something in place so that we can kind of get direction and get our meeting kind of into where it needs to be.
Good point, Peter.
Are you okay, Alicia, with that? Just because
Well, the only, my only concern is when we issued this special permit, there was a lot of thought put into the hours and why. And I just, I would like to still honor that special permit process.
Right. So we're, we're close because Brian took these and just shaved an hour off and pasted them in. So we're, we're close, we're close.
I'm just worried that there's going to be no lights and it's going to be dark.
Peter, it allows, it allows, um, Eric to get his fescues in too. They can, you know, it allows some of the stuff to get grown. We can really, I mean, we can push the mitigation now, now's the time to do it, Alicia.
Yeah.
You know, you know, those hours we consider to be extensive and because Eric would like more, so it's going to push him and everyone to try to get this done so that we can protect the Carboneys and then get Eric open. So I think it, you know, we got to, we got to, got to make a decision somewhere.
Looks like we're doing a little bit of just fine tuning on this. Um, so I think I have a sense that the planning board is comfortable with this approach. And I also have a sense that the select board is also comfortable with this approach. So I think we have a, a direction that we're, we're headed in. And, uh, Brian, I'm just going to leave it up to you to kind of tidy up the, the verbiage, and I can see that you're doing that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll do some quality control on it.
Okay.
Um, I still have one more question. What about the, um, the mitigation of, of the trees?
They're going to take care of that. They're going to take care of that.
They're going to take, okay, I just don't want those to be left by the wayside, and I think the fence still is a conversation too.
Yeah, Mike, Mike already indicated they'd take care of that, so that's good, that's good. Um, okay, so do we want to entertain this as a motion at this point in time, folks? Or doing, want to just take this as a, as a directive?
So I think before we, we vote on this, we move on this, I think, Brian, can you just reiterate one more time for me and so that all the boards in the public understand what this is going to do?
Well, I can tell you what my understanding of what it's going to, uh, do will be.
Yeah.
And let me, let me just go through it block by block. Um, the, the plan that you have in front of you, this is where my, my mouse is scrolling over, would be approved only to the extent necessary to allow your inspection officials, uh, particularly your building inspector, your building official, to issue a, um, a temporary occupancy permit, provided your conservation agents, your building inspectors, uh, and your board of health, maybe that should be health agent, um, uh, all their punch lists are satisfied. So those are code requirements and requirements of those departments. So those would have to be satisfied in any event before those, those officials would issue their permits and permissions. Um, so now you get down to paragraph four where the, where the action occurs here. Um, and this sets the, the outer limits of what's actually allowed to happen on the site. So normally, um, you know, once the special permit hearing and site plan approval process is completed, those get filed with the town clerk, and then your inspection officials use those essentially as the zoning for the site. Um, so when they issue a permit and review a permit application, they go back to, you know, your special permit and your site plan approval and make sure that the application is consistent with it. So now this is what they would be checking. When they go inspect the site and when they, uh, go review a permit application, they're going to look to see if it's, if it's consistent with, uh, the select boards and the planning board's approval. And here's the approval, uh, no operations or activities, meaning nothing. Nothing happens on that site any later than the hour set forth in the schedule on the months identified. Um, and then to further clarify that, with, specifically with respect to exterior lighting, there should be no, shall be, no exterior lighting of any kind permitted at any time, with the exception of security lighting only on the pro shop building. And the, the two block paragraphs at the end are, are just caveats and, and qualifiers. Um, so recognizing, um, that the peer review, um, by an expert selected by the board and funded by the applicant will occur, and that this is a temporary process. And if any of these conditions, uh, are not adhered to, the board can end it. And in fact, the way I wrote it, it says it just becomes null and void. So the approval just evaporates if it's not complied with.
So that would be the, um, so in other words, he'd be shut down again.
Yeah, in, in fact, what would happen is the temporary, it would be a violation of the conditions of the temporary CFO.
Yep.
So Peter, your building official would recognize that there was a violation and say, "I'm revoking your CFO. You violated the terms that I issued it upon." So that, that's, I'm not suggesting that it's happening, I'm not seeing the future here. I'm just saying that would be the enforcement process. And then the last block paragraph is just a flag of the fact that, um, that we're not done here. Um, this is not a final approval.
So assuming the boards vote to approve this, what would be the next step? Would we, would he have to apply, submit another application with a lighting plan and everything when, when that comes to play? No.
Nope, the public hearing process would continue on. This is just an interim order like the, the prior superseding orders that the boards have adopted. So this is sort of in the stream, um, and we would remain in that stream. So I imagine the very next step would be, um, we would start identifying, uh, prospective experts to contract with. Uh, we'd get a scope of services, and then we'd be asking, um, the applicant to fund that. And then we'd, we'd get them on the job. And then the boards would have to, of course, you know, before we adjourn tonight, would have to pick another date for the continued public hearing.
And Alicia, what, what it really does, and it took me a while to see it too. If you're kind of hearing what Leslie said and I said and what, uh, Eric said, it's really taken an hour to clean the place up and get out of there. So he's really closing everything down, let's say in September at 6:30 or before, to get everyone out of there, because he can't have anything on.
Yeah.
So it, it motivates everyone to get going so that he can have the hours that he probably, you know, needed in the beginning.
Okay, so looking forward, we're going to have to, this, this is going to probably be, we're not there to discuss this right now, but we're going to have to set this public hearing to a date certain. Um, how far ahead do you think the board needs to go? Six weeks?
So might I suggest that we try to conclude this business? This, we're going to have this in the form of a motion.
Okay.
I, I, I'd like to entertain, um, a, a motion from my board, uh, to adopt this.
So will.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, do a roll call. Uh, Larry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And the chair also is in favor, thank you. Okay, Alicia.
So, um, could I get a motion, please?
Motion. Seconded.
Um, and, uh, all those in favor, Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Great. Uh, Brian, thanks for this, uh, share screen, and I think we'll go back to our Hollywood Squares if we could.
Okay, and just one clarification, I'll, I'll continue to do some QC on this. So, you know, there'll be some typographical or stylistic changes, obviously nothing substantive, but the final form will, will be a little cleaned up.
Wonderful, we appreciate that reflecting where, what our intention is, great. Um, okay, so on to the next question, Alicia, for, for continuation date. I think that was where we were going. Uh, I'm going to suggest that we, um, look at maybe four weeks. Martha, do you think that'd be enough time for things to get settled in, or should we look at six weeks?
Well, I think it, it really depends on how long it takes to, to get a peer reviewer and then have that work done.
Okay, so we have at least a roadmap for operations. Um, uh, I would say let's give ourselves comfort here so we're not crammed. Uh, let's look maybe at a six week window. Uh, if we get everything and all of our, our work done, then we can just have a presentation to the board, clean, concise, uh, and then we can make a decision, uh, on that activity. So I would, I would think maybe a six week win, uh, window might be a nice length of time for this task to be accomplished in an effective manner. Um, so, uh, I, if, if my board's comfortable with that.
Peter, can I ask one question?
Sure, Jeff.
During that period of time, if we have a lighting consultant and there's substantive changes, are we going to have sidewalks, are you and Alicia and Peter and the, I, is that going to done? And it's fine if you guys do it internally too, but we're going to need to have sidewalks and everything during that six week period?
I, I would think so. Probably what I would think happening is Alicia and I would continue doing our, our, our visitations as necessary. And then when we get to a point where we need a sidewalk, we would ask the boards to come down for a sidewalk.
Yeah.
To help.
And that makes good sense, and, and you'll work with the Carboneys and, and Eric to mitigate things, sounds good to me.
Try to get everything moving in, in the forward direction, okay. Um, that being the case, I'd entertain a motion from the planning board for a continuation. Oh, hold on, let me get a date first, Martha, what date would you like to pick for us?
Well, a couple of questions. And six weeks takes us to the beginning of October.
Right.
The planning board's first meeting in October is scheduled for October 7th. So would the boards want to choose that as a date or try to do an off?
7th works out, me.
My only concern, Martha, is we probably wouldn't get much other planning board business done.
Under, honestly, that's why I was asking about an off.
Because we have a pretty full lot, line of stuff coming down our train tracks.
Yeah. Would it be helpful to maybe have this public hearing at 6:30 on a board night? Do you think we could get everything we need to get done in 30 minutes?
Or even six, even 6 o'clock.
Yeah.
If, if we did that, then it would get done in 60 minutes because I, I can't derail what's, what's going on with our other stuff.
Right.
Well, I'm thinking of the board of selectmen on a Tuesday night, but you guys have to show up on a Tuesday night.
So that would be, that would take us to the, the 13th of October if you're going back to two meetings in a month.
Please.
Is that okay with?
That's fine.
Is that okay with the planning board?
When, when's the, when's the planning board meeting?
7th.
The first and third Wednesdays of the month, so the 7th and the 21st.
21st.
I mean, it's up to you guys. I don't mind meeting earlier either if it's important or not important. So, I mean, I, I'm good either way. Meeting on the 7th or the, uh, or the, uh, 16th or whatever.
So on, on an off night?
No, no, no. If, if the planning board meets on the 7th, which is before our Tuesday meeting, I don't mind meeting then either. It depends on what people need.
We're going to need more than an hour for this.
Yeah. Conflict on the 7th.
Yeah.
Good, I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to be selfish here. Uh, I'd rather not do, do it on the night of a planning board meeting because if we start at 6, and we have two more hours of regular planning board stuff, my, my board's going to be junk. I don't want to do that to them, so.
How about, how about the 14th?
14th?
Of October.
I like that. I like that idea, Larry.
This way we're not up against a time frame either of another.
That sounds good, exactly.
So, uh, 14th, Martha, what time would you like to have us convene?
Normal time, 7 o'clock, if this is the only item on, on the agenda.
Yeah.
Can we ask how counsel, if that works for him?
Yes, we should.
Thank you.
Right.
Perfect for me.
All right, and, uh, Mr. Rosen, is that good on your team?
Eric, that's good. Eric, it's good with me if it's good with you.
Beautiful, so that being the case, I'd entertain a motion for, uh, continuation of this, uh, public hearing to the 14th of October at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, Larry?
Yes.
Uh, George? Thank you. Uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Uh, Woody?
Yes.
Perfect, all yours, Alicia.
Um, so I entertain a motion from my board?
Motion.
Second.
Question? All those in favor, Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes.
Wonderful, wonderful. Um, I want to thank everyone, uh, the length of the meeting, uh, is, is notable. Uh, I want to thank councils for being here, I want to thank public for being here. Uh, Martha, thank you very much. Uh, and if there's nothing else to discuss, uh, I'd like to bid us all good evening.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
I love that.
Motion to adjourn, and I'll have, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to, motion to adjourn.
Oh, my goodness, we're, we're, hold on, Leslie, you made the motion, Larry made the second, okay, let me do a roll call.
Second, yeah.
Okay, Larry, yes.
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 Okay, uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Uh, Woody?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Now it's my turn, sorry. Mike, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Yeah, Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes.
All right.
Everyone have a good night.
Great minds think alike.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Right.
Bye-bye.
Good night.